And it looks like we're gonna start with other business today on the agenda. So we have Ardmore Drive, lots 29, 30, and 31, Hilltop Estates subdivision. For incomplete site improvements. An extension on the date.
Ardmore?
Please, if we have a representative?
Hi, my name's Kevin Petrini. I'm here on behalf of Michael McNiff. He unfortunately cannot attend. He's asking for an extension on this for the next meeting, please.
October 26 is what we had discussed.
Yep.
Okay, extension of the performance of the subdivision to October 26.
Okay.
Yes.
Does any of the board have any questions, comments? Jim? No? Peg?
No.
Charles? No. All set? Then I need a certificate of action or a...
There's three copies there, just for...
Okay.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held August 14, 2018 by a motion duly made and seconded. It was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, having been requested by MPM Companies LLC, hereafter call the developer to extend the completion date for incomplete site improvements. Do hereby vote to extend said completion date. The developer agrees to complete the work no later than August 26, 2018.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have Holly Hill Definitive Subdivision, 309 and 309 R, Locust Street, for performance guarantee.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the developer, who is also here this evening. And as you know, we have a planning board covenant posted for securing the installation of the ways and the municipal services. And we are requesting a release of that covenant and replacing that with a tripartite agreement as well as a statement account that would be held by the town for the bond amount as indicated, which you do have a copy, I believe, in your package. The full bond amount being $175,242.42. So we're requesting a release of the covenant and an acceptance of the tripartite agreement.
I don't know if the rest of the board saw the email that Francine sent out, but staff has some comments on the variation on the numbers that we're getting.
Right. So typically, when we do this, we ask the engineering division of DPW to assist us with the estimated cost of construction. In this particular case, engineering has included the wall behind the lots between, basically behind the back of the houses and the wetland resource area. On the subdivision plans that the board approved, that was a wall, basically a short wall without a riprap slope on it. And as things have developed, the developer has chosen to use a different technology rather than a stone retaining wall. They're gonna use a technology that's a vegetated, it's basically the same, serves the same function, but it's a vegetated wall rather than a stone, a vertical stone wall. Engineering included the costs of that in their cost estimate for the roadwork. So we're backing that out because the subdivision control law and your regs don't allow the board to, you can't, it's not a public improvement related to any public infrastructure. There's a policy matter there that engineering wants, is encouraging us to take on, which I think we should talk about under a more appropriate setting. I think at this point, we don't have the jurisdiction or the authority to include that in the process. In the estimate, like I said, in the fall, when we're fully staffed, I would like to revisit this item with the board and talk about whether field changes to plans and how much, whether a change like this should at least have to come back to the board or administrative review. This particular one did go to conservation, and they've received an order of conditions for all of these lots. Engineering reviewed this proposed vegetated wall and approved it. So there's no issue here, other than engineering not understanding that we don't have the jurisdiction to include that cost estimate in the right-of-way construction number. So we're not gonna try to make a habit of going against engineering's recommendations, but in this particular case, we just don't have the jurisdiction to go there.
Okay.
So that's why there's a discrepancy.
So what we're, I just wanna make it clear, what we're approving now is the bond release of the dollar amount the applicant has set forth, set forth as opposed to what engineering's numbers were.
The lower number.
Correct. That's what I'm getting at. Okay.
Yeah, we're releasing the lot release, we're releasing all the lots for construction in exchange for this amount, which is not the same amount as engineering is recommending.
Just wanted to make sure. Does the board have any questions regarding either staff or for the applicant?
So this, so the $175 is for roadway improvements then, the completion of roadway improvements only?
And municipal utilities.
And how high was that riprap wall?
Same, everything was the same. It's just, so on the plans, and I apologize for being crude, but, so it's, the vertical wall was four feet high.
Okay.
And then there was a one-to-one riprap slope in parts as high as 10 feet.
Okay.
So now, instead of that, we're getting this, and this is vegetated rather than a wall with riprap.
Okay.
Okay, all right, all right, so, okay.
It's just a technology that engineering's not familiar with, it hasn't been deployed in this community that we're aware of, and so there was just some weariness about its use, and they threw it into the cost of construction. They look at the whole plan set, so they pulled out the whole plan and said it's gonna cost X for us to do that. We have to back out the costs of that, unfortunately.
All right, I was concerned, I sent Francine an email about that because the discrepancy was quite large.
No, yeah, the walls, the, that estimated cost of construction of that technology, whether it be a wall or this product, is in like a $117,000 range.
Okay. But I think it is important, as Aaron pointed out, the wall has been approved by the Conservation Commission because it's within their jurisdiction, and the town engineer did recommend that approval. So it's not as if he hasn't reviewed it. He has.
Okay, and then in another date, we'll discuss. When there is a change to a plan...
Yeah, I think that was something that the town engineer was more just like, well, but you approved this, and now they wanna do that. In this particular case, we had a fail-safe because all of the lots in question happen to also be in the jurisdiction of Concom, but we may not have that next time, and it's just, that's a policy question that I think the board should take on, kind of outside of a particular project, under, you know, the requirements that we have to deal with when a subdivision's before the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Charles, any questions?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
So you're comfortable with this, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Do you have a...
So, let's have, we'll have Jim.
This is certified, a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on August 14, 2018 by a motion duly made and seconded. It was voted. We, the Planning Board of the Town of Danvers, having been requested by Danvers Living LLC, hereafter call the developer to accept performance guarantee in the form of a tripartite agreement and passbook account, by and among the developer, Enterprise Bank, a banking corporation having a usual place of business at 8 High Street, Andover, Massachusetts, and the Planning Board of the Town of Danvers, in the total amount of $175,242.42. Do hereby vote to accept the tripartite agreement in the amount of $129,105 and the statement account in the amount of $46,137.42, and to release the Planning Board covenant dated June 13, 2017, recorded with the Essex South District Registry of Deeds and Book 36086, page 105, for lots 1 to 7 inclusive. These lots are shown on a plan entitled Holly Hill Definitive Subdivision at 309 and 309 Rear, Locust Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, prepared for DUC Residential LLC, dated March 15, 2017, and revised through May 22, 2017, prepared by the Morin-Germain Group, Inc., and recorded with said registry in Plan Book 461, Plan 26. The developer agrees to complete the work no later than June 30, 2019, unless said date shall be extended by written amendment to the tripartite agreement, herewith accepted.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I, can I ask for one correction on the third line of that motion? It references passbook account, that should be statement account. You had correctly stated later as statement account.
Could I have a motion on the amendment?
I move that we approve the amendment.
Second. All those in favor of approving the amended applicant?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Motion, thank you. That was the right word.
Thank you very much. Do you want to sign the tripartite agreement?
And then with the release of covenant, there's two copies there. Yeah. Do we have, on this one, on the certificate of action? Yeah, so we'll correct this and stamp this rather than sign it.
I need to notarize your... Mr. Chairman, I'll notarize your sitting truth, if that's all right?
That is fine, I'm leaving.
There's two copies of that. Can I give her one in the original? There you go. We'll hold on to one.
Here you go.
And just down to Jim.
One more, Seth, Jim? Can we hold on to one?
I think they need to notarize something.
Okay, okay. One more, Jim?
Try.
This release of covenant in escrow until I've delivered everything to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have public hearings. Nine Electronics Ave.
If we go out for you to read?
I have to open up the hearing. Notice thereby, given that the Danvers Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the Tumi Room, Danvers Town Hall, 1 Sylvan Street, on Tuesday, August 14, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. relative to a request for a major modification to an approved site plan submitted by TWC Realty LLC for property at Nine Electronics Ave. In the industrial 2 zoning district being shown on Assessor's Map 32, Lot 50 pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw for renovations to the building. These renovations include a new entrance on the southeast face of the existing building. There will be an exterior landing and stairs and a proposed handicap access ramp and accessible space. This accessible route has been provided to the new handicapped accessible space. There is a relocation of eight angled parking spaces with eight new parallel parking spaces. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available for public review in Land Use and Community Service Department in Danvers Town Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Chris Sparages, Registered Professional Engineer here on the Commonwealth from the Engineering and Survey Office of Williams &amp; Sparages. And with me here this evening, representing the ownership of the property, TWC Realty LLC, is its manager, Mr. Tom Cunningham, here in the front row. Mr. Cunningham operates one of the, one of the uses inside of the building that we're gonna be talking about tonight, Cunningham Engineering. He's been there for many years, having purchased the building back in the year 2000. Reason why we're here for the board tonight is to discuss a major modification to an approved site plan that was approved back in 1995 in July. What you see here before you is that approved site plan that was signed and initialed here and approved by the Planning Board back in July, on July 28, 1995. The subject property, number Nine, Electronics Avenue, is located on the western side, or the west side of this plan here. We are off of the industrial drive, which is off of Route 1 south. North is like this up the plan here, and this is inside of the Danvers Industrial Park. It's shown on the Assessor's Map, as the public ad mentioned, on Assessor's Map 32, Lot 50. And the area that's shown in orange is approximately 2.3 acres. And that 2.3 acres is improved by an existing 32,000 square foot industrial building, this pink rectangle here. And surrounding the, that building is, is a parking and loading area that consists of driveways and parking spaces all around the building. In the existing condition, as mentioned again in the legal ad, we are in the industrial 2, or I-2 zoning district. And the current use is in the building. There are four tenants, Mr. Cunningham's business, Cunningham Engineering, which is a machine shop manufacturing company, TDF Metal Finishing Incorporated, another company, manufacturing company called UMG Technologies that builds machines that insert circuit boards on the assembly line of automobile, for automobile manufacturers. And then Aurora Healthcare US Corp. And that is the company that we're gonna be talking about, that's the subject of the proposed improvement. They're located in this sort of southeast quadrant of the building, where space is being renovated to accommodate this user, and what we're proposing is a new entrance located roughly here in the proposed southeast quadrant of the building. Aurora manufactures, is involved in the manufacture of MRI machines that are specific for breast cancer detection. And onsite, what they do is, they help prepare assemblies for the MRI machines, which are then taken out and inserted when they put all the pieces together of an MRI machine at a healthcare facility. So I'm gonna zoom in to the, to this front portion of the building here. We've gone out and done a, up to date, took a graphic survey. This is back in April of this year, zeroing in, so we've zoomed in. Here's the, the front of the building, if you will. Cunningham Engineering on this side and Aurora over here. This is the new landing that's in front of the building and a set of stairs. Because we have, the floor of the building is roughly three to three and a half feet higher than the pavement below, and so that's gonna, that's gonna require us to have a set of stairs off of this landing, and then a ramp that'll come off in this direction, which I'll go into in a moment. This is sort of the existing condition, as if you were to walk out there today. This ramp will, is proposed to be constructed off in this direction. And these existing parking spaces here, eight of them altogether, are in conflict with the new, the new landing, the stairs, and this ramp that will also allow handicap access to a new handicap space that we're proposing over here, and then converting this space to a accessible space, so accessible route will look something like this, heading this way. So there are a total of nine parking spaces that are in conflict. The zoning bylaw tells us that when these things happen on an approved site plan in Section 4.3.8A, if you propose to move a space any more, you know, than five feet, we're, we have to come back before you for a major modification to an approved site plan. And so we prepared a proposed site plan that details the construction of the ramp, which is in this darker color here. This, this'll take us that, that distance, if you will, down, almost three to three and a half feet, down to a level landing. This ramp, of course, will have an ADA compliant landing, excuse me, ramp system and railing system. It'll take us down to a level landing here, and then here, where I didn't color in the pavement, this white area that's hatched is our accessible route to the accessible space. And then here's our proposed van, van accessible parking space here. And in order to reconfigure the parking area so, so that we don't lose any parking spaces, what we've done, because we had quite a bit of pavement here, you can probably see that, we're proposing to line up seven parallel parking spaces here that measure 10 by 20, and two more here, for a total of nine, to make up for the nine that are being reconfigured, if you will. So when you add up our nine reconfigured spaces and the seven remaining spaces, we're still at 16, which matches the existing condition, so we're not losing any parking spaces. And this still leaves us with a driveway aisle width of 24 feet as you go here, which still will accommodate two-way traffic, if you will. On the plan that was initially submitted to the Planning Board as part of the major modification, we had one less space down here, so let's call it, we numbered it Space Number 7. Space Number 7 was lined up here. As part of the fire department comments, they asked us not to block the access to the building at this location, and so we simply moved, eliminated this parking space and moved it, and moved it over here. In order to make this accessible route accessible and to make it, allow it to meet federal and state requirements, there has to be a little bit of regrading done. And so this, this proposed conditions plan also has some minor grading changes that allow us to make sure that we meet the minimum and maximum slope requirements for the accessible route from the parking space here, all the way to the level landing. We have a little bit of filling, excuse me, a little bit of cutting on this side, and a little bit of filling over here in order to accommodate this. This limit of pavement that will have to be cut and reshaped a little bit is outlined here in red, and that measures just over 1,600 square feet or so. In discussions with Mr. Cunningham, he expects that this work can be, can be done relatively quickly, within a couple of days' time. Once that area is regraded and repaved, it will allow us to have that accessible route access. This ramp will be assembled and installed here, will allow us to have handicap access to the Aurora Healthcare US Corp entrance, the new entrance here, into the space here. That concludes my formal presentation, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to answer any questions as Mr. Cunningham.
I'm gonna start by opening up to the board. Peg, do you have any particular questions about the...
So this entrance will serve Aurora and any other companies?
So this location, I think Aurora will have two, two access points. Tom, there's an access point on this side and here, but that's the only...
For just for Aurora?
That's right.
Any other businesses have handicapped accessible there?
That's a good question.
Because that was done in 1995, I don't know if the...
Yeah, the doors are leveled to the ground.
Are they leveled to the ground? Okay.
On the other side of the building.
Do you use all those spaces? Do you use all of this?
A lot of these spaces are, when I, every time I've ever visited the site, they're not, they're not filled.
Well, that's, that's my question. I mean, however, you don't know with, is Aurora moving in?
Yeah, but they, they'll be parking on the other side.
On the other side?
Yeah.
Okay. I really don't have a problem with it. It's, you know, what you're doing is, you're making an office or a manufacturing facility handicapped accessible, and, you know, you're providing for the additional spaces that they may need, but, you know, it's not like there's been a parking issue there yet. No, there could be, but not yet. So I really don't have a problem with this. The, it looked like the engineer, town engineer approved it.
Yeah.
And the fire department's fine with it. The only thing is, I saw a comment from the building inspector, and he's working on another issue.
I think the building commissioner has some frustrations with some of the interior work, but nothing, nothing related to the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is, I know it's a major modification, but it doesn't seem like it's a major issue.
Charles, anything?
No, I had, I thought I had a question, and then it was answered by reading.
Jim?
Yeah, my only question was about the, how much parking is used over there, but it sounds like it's not maxed out presently?
No.
No, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
The only question I have is, the handicap parking spot that's been there the whole time, was it ADA? Or, I don't have a major issue with it, but is there a reason parking number, number nine, where it was right next to the ramp, wasn't used as the...
This park...
Like I said, it's not, it's not a deal break or anything with me, I got no issues with it.
This space here?
Yeah, well, parking, you got the parking spot number nine, which is right next to the ramp.
Yeah, right over here, you mean.
Is there, was it ADA where it's approved over where it is already, that you didn't go through the process to move it over to nine instead, where the ramp's right there?
Oh, I understand your question. So we are very challenged here with the, with this, the slope of the parking lot.
Okay.
It's relatively steep from the building across here, from an ADA standpoint. And we tried to pick the location for the accessible route that would result in the least amount of earth disturbance.
No, that's, I agree, I just, where it was, you had those other spots there.
This broad slope is too, technically too steep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The hashed off area on the white, is that gonna be painted on the, on the ground the whole way through, so people know that that's for handicap to get around?
So that's the way, that's, that's the reason why it was hatched that way? The intent is, is to have it painted.
So it's gonna be that way on the, on the, okay, good. And the only other thing I have is, since you have parking spots right next to the ramp, there's gonna be a railing there, right? Just to make sure, just for the safety, where the cars are pulling right up next to it. That was all I had. Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open this up to the public. Anybody have any questions, comments for the applicant? No? Then I'm bringing it back to the board. Unless there's any other questions, we can move forward with a motion.
Do we need to have a motion for a major monachus? Or do we close the hearing first?
I think you just need to declare it minor.
No, we don't do anything for the major.
Yeah. We're not there for, only for a minor, I think.
Then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So we were off by a parking space because of fire's comments, so all this.
So this is amended according to the numbered parking spots.
Yeah.
This is to certify that a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on August 14, 2018 by a motion duly made and seconded. It was voted. We, the Danvers Planning Board, having been requested under Section 4 of the zoning bylaw to approve a major modification to an approved site plan for the property located at Nine Electronics Avenue, Assessor's Map 32, Lot 50. Do hereby vote to approve the application submitted by TWC Realty LLC to modify the previously approved site plan. The approval authorizes a new entrance on the southeast face of the existing building. There will be an exterior landing and stairs and a proposed handicapped accessible ramp and accessible space. An accessible route has been provided to this new handicapped accessible space. To accommodate this improvement, nine angled parking spaces will be relocated by nine new parallel parking spaces. All these changes are shown in the following plans. Site Plan 9, Nine Electronics, Site Plan, Nine Electronics Avenue, Danvers, Massachusetts, prepared by Chris Sparages, Professional Registered Engineer, number 40174, Williams &amp; Sparages, 189 North Main Street, Suite 102, Middleton, Mass. Plans, Sheet 1 of 3, existing conditions dated June 18, 2018, revised June 18, 2018. Sheet 2 of 3, grading and layout date, June 18, 2018, revised June 18, 2018. Sheet 3 of 3, construction details, date June 18, revised June 18, 2018. This approval is subject to the following conditions. One, the main entrance for the fire alarm system and building sprinkler system must be kept clear of parked vehicles. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the Planning Board on January 27, 2004, amended through February 2027, February 27, 2018, which are incorporated, incorporated in the Certificate of Action by reference. Any approval of this site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof, if construction is not begun by such date, except for good cause.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Next, we have an agenda item on a withdrawal for 17 Cherry Hill Drive. They ask to be, to withdraw without precedence, without prejudice, at the applicant's request. And I believe we have to take a motion and a vote on accepting that withdrawal. Anyone?
Move to accept the withdrawal of the applicant, the H.L. Turner Group, Inc., for property at 17 Cherry Hill Drive, request for major modification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second, we have the same situation with 75 Sylvan Street, and they're asking also for withdrawn without prejudice. Do I have a motion for that?
I move that we accept 75 Sylvan Street's request to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have 44 and 50 Maple Street, and this is a continued public hearing. Next, we have 44 and 50 Maple Street, and this is a continued public hearing. Ms. McCann.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann, I'm here on behalf of the applicant who is here this evening. Also with me, Scott Cameron, the project engineer, and Sid Silver, the project architect. As the board may recall, we made a full presentation to you back at your June meeting with regard to the redevelopment of this property at 44 Maple Street. We've included 50 Maple Street into the, this application because the lots will be combined, should this be approved, into one lot, but the redevelopment of 50 Maple Street happened back in 2006. And what we are proposing to do is to renovate the existing commercial building into a commercial and residential building. We are proposing commercial uses on the first floor as they are now, and then a second and a third floor for a total of 10 one-bedroom residential units. One of those units will be affordable at 70% of the area median income level, as we have worked with the Affordable Housing Trust relative to that, that designation. We did receive, as you know, a variance from the Board of Appeals for this project, so we made our full presentation to you at the June meeting, and at that time we had received comments just right before the meeting from the town engineering department, so we needed some time to respond to those comments, which we've done. We also wanted to have an opportunity to respond to a few of the comments that the board raised, and there weren't too many at the end of our last meeting. I think what you asked us to do, first of all, is to address engineering department comments, which we've done. You asked us to look at the color of the building, we had shown a green color, and we do have a color option for you to look at in, as opposed to the green coloring. The facade treatment as well, you asked us to look at. And so with that, I think what I'd like to do is to turn it over to Scott Cameron to walk you through the department comments that we've responded to, and then our architect, Sid, can show you what we've come up with for the elevation drawings, which, again, we've submitted those to you, you do have them in your packages, but we'll go over those with you and hopefully be prepared to move along. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cameron with Moore &amp; Cameron Group, 66 South Street in Danvers, Massachusetts. I'll be relatively brief because the engineering comments that we were received before the prior hearing, they're all technical in nature, adding information plans, utility information, adjustments to notes, et cetera. So there's really been no change to the layout of the site, it was a small parking area, as you recall, in the back of the property. The parking is on an angle on this side and this side. We're proposing some adjustments to it to add in a handicap accessible parking space, some signage designated this as a resident parking only, and we have the parking sufficient for the residents on the project. I will point out, there were a handful of comments that did come up again on Friday. I'd be happy to go through what's, what's left. I will tell you my position on them, is I've gone as far as I can with these comments without having fully engineered building drawings at my disposal, which, as you know, don't typically come until after this process. They have to do mainly with verifying pipe sizes, pipe locations, sewer sizes, you know, the plan for how we're going to shut down the sidewalk. I, I don't know this information until we have the building drawings and we have, you know, the mechanical systems designed for the building, I know where they need them to come out of the building, and then we'll do a final adjustment. So I have notes on the plans covering this here, that we'll be confirming that, as is typical with any, any construction project we go through. We never really have access to those. I'd be happy to go through those, those few comments here if you like.
Does the board go ahead?
I was just going to say, I think there was three outstanding items from the memo, and we've, should the board choose to go forward tonight, we've added those three to the draft decision as items that will need to be complete prior to first building permit.
Yes.
So we're comfortable with that, but just, if the board chooses to go forward.
I think that's a great approach, too, because that really gives us an opportunity to engineer the building, and then we can engineer these, and this is a typical process. We haven't done that in the past in Danvers, we've never gotten into that much detail really in Danvers, you know, my 12 or so years working here. Other communities, this would be a typical process, where we get through the permitting phase, making sure everything is going to work, and then we get into the, the construction drawing phase, and that's where we do all the really, really nitty-gritty detail. You know, one of these, we need to dig a test hole to figure out what's, what's in the street, and we're, you know, it's not a thing we'd be looking to do at this point in time.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so we approve, and in the engineering division's letter says prior to final approval by town. So building inspector would be involved before that permit is issued, right? And so he would be the one, he and the building inspector and engineering would be working together on that, on the, on the comments that engineering had at that point?
Yeah, no building permit issues until engineering is satisfied.
Okay, then I'm fine, okay, then I'm fine with that.
These questions have been satisfactory.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, that's all I got for you.
All right.
Unless you want to go through the nitty-gritty of the technical drawings.
Does anybody have a question for the engineer?
Concrete line ductile iron, is that what's the LDI? Cement line.
Before, we can get the rest of information before any questions? Anybody have anything right now, though?
Nope.
No? All set? Charles?
Layout schematics to scale?
I did ask. I have one question. I'm sorry, what?
Are the, the layout schematics to scale?
Layout schematics, could you...
Here on the architectural plans.
Well, why don't we have Sid?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's coming up in a second.
Show you the architecturals.
Okay.
I think the answer is yes.
Jim, did you have a quick question before Scott sat down?
Did we decide on the color?
Oh, that's what's coming now.
Architecture.
Thank you. Can't wait for that color.
Good evening. Sid Silver, DMS Design, with the architects for the project, we're at 100 Coming Center, Suite 339 in Beverly. This is the original scheme we presented last time. The only that changed on this particular scheme is we showed some more vegetation as requested to indicate rooftop deck location, and we have some flower boxes where they're mostly hidden by the vehicles, but wherever you see these large windows in front of each commercial space will be some type of planter box as well. One of the comments from our last meeting was to look at the, pushing the top floor back to reduce the impact on the street, so we did that on this scheme here. That's the only change between these two schemes, is we pushed that top floor back about two feet. That resulted in having to carry this horizontal freeze across the front of the building, and we also had to lose the, the pediment-type treatment over the windows. The roof, overall roof height still stays the same, we're still at the 30-foot cap, but it's just pushed back slightly.
Did you say two feet or one?
We pushed the top floor here back two feet from, from this scheme. And with that in mind, as the requested change, that is the original scheme, but with a different color scheme.
Is that Danvers Falcon blue?
Yes.
You guys are really buttering yourself.
That, it's tough to, I mean, it looks great on computer screen, and when you print it, it always gets a little bit skewed. You know, we look, we look at like a more of a earth-tone, traditional, historic blue, or maybe like a light gray-blue, but that looks a little bit more brighter than we envisioned, but it's essentially the two color schemes we nailed down, green or blue.
So if you like the setback on the second, on the third floor, but the blue color.
Yes.
It's really four options.
Yes.
Exactly, yes.
We can mix and match with any way we want. So I think that's what we, you were asking us to look at?
Yep.
There we have it.
Charles, any questions about the architectural design? No? Peg?
No, I real, I, you know, I like the triangles on top of the, I've forgotten what they're called, the, whatever you have on top of those windows, treatment, treatments, but I really do like that setback. I think the building looks a little bit less imposing, and so I think I like the setback. How does that affect the units? I'm looking at a pitch diagram of the units, a schematic diagram. The ones in front going to be two feet?
They'll be two feet shorter.
Two feet shorter?
Yeah.
Okay, is that much of an impact?
Not really, we added a, kind of a generous 13-foot change.
Okay.
Long bedroom, that becomes 11-foot change, which is more standard size.
Yeah.
The living space gets a little bit impacted, but once again, it's only a couple of feet, so.
No, and, and either color, I, I like the green, I think that was, if it's a gray-blue, that's fine, but I think I do kind of like that little setback, because it just doesn't make the building look as imposing, so I'm fine.
Jim, any comments about the architecture?
No, I like, I like the step back, because I think that's good to kind of remove the canyon effect. I was just kidding with the, Aaron, we could push the two feet back the other way, you know, no one's going to see it. Kind of weighing the alley. But no, I like, I like this step back, and I like the blue action, and I think that looks great.
I like the step back a little bit more myself. I'm just a fan of blue more than green, but other than that, it's, I'm not a, I like both colors, I really don't have an issue either way. I'm more concerned about the step back, I think that, I like that break in the wall. I think aesthetically, it's a bit more pleasing, not to mention it. Anything we can do to reduce some of the canyon effect that we've been talking about in the past, I think is a good idea, especially where it doesn't really change any of the units, and it makes them more of a standard shape, so I'm kind of a fan of that, so. Unless the board has anything else, I'm going to open it up to the public. This is a public hearing, anybody have any questions? Please use the podium and just give us your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I'd also like to echo the comments that the setback is, is an improvement. We've come a long way from the initial submission that called for a mansard roof and, and four-story, so appreciate the developer kind of working with the town to come up with this final design, or this design, not really concerned about the color so much, but definitely having the setback on the third floor is more in tune with what the new overlay that the planning board and the town meeting are contemplating in, in implementing in this area. So I think this is maybe a, kind of the, a model maybe for going forward for this, this stretch of, of Maple Street to kind of fit in with what's already been approved over on the north side of Hobart Street. So again, I think this is, this is a good design. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Nova Samarit, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I just had a question about the architectural. I like the setback a lot, is there any thought to continuing the rail in front of the windows and having one of those be a door, so there's like balcony kind of access for that third floor?
I believe it's too narrow, but I'm going to let the architect...
It would essentially become a Juliet balcony.
Right, 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 it wouldn't.
You open the door and that would be there to keep you full hazard, so.
Yeah, I just thought, instead of just, because now that setback is sort of wasted space, and it could be for the living space if you open doors, it'd just be nice. Anyway, just asking.
I believe they would have access to the, to the, the rooftop area adjacent to it.
Oh, okay, right. Oh, right. Yeah, you're right, hold on, okay. All right, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Bradbury.
Bill Radstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I also like the improvements, but I will make the comment as I had in the past, this is making Danvers Square something other than what it is or what it should be. The people that have talked to me are not happy with this kind of a large building in this square, they don't think it's appropriate. Having said that, if it's approved, we'll live with it. My sentiment, the people who've talked to me, they don't care for the size of this. Thinking that this starts, where does it start? Whether it's a canyon effect, even by recessing one of the floors a couple feet, it's still going to make it look different than what we'd like. Sorry.
Okay. Any comments towards that? Anyone? No?
I have a question on the plans, no, to Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead.
And I apologize, just a staff question on the architectural, I just noticed it before, I studied them before, and I missed this. On the one on the left, you show, I don't know what it's called, but the, there's a vertical line separating the two-foot element from the three-foot element, but in the step-back version, that's not there. Is that simply because you, you've set that wall back two feet, so that element's not there?
Yeah, because this break here now...
Yeah.
Kind of emphasizes the, the horizontal.
Right.
And that was kind of tying in the verticalness of this piece.
Yeah.
So putting it there just kind of makes it a little bit too busy.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't notice it until now when I cast it. Thank you.
So are there any more comments from the board? Then I'm asking for a closing of the public hearing at this time. So we'll...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. So we have a certificate of action ready?
Yeah, there was one typo on the second page, so.
Okay. Now, just one comment, does this include anything to do with the architectural design in terms of the step back, or is that up to the... I didn't, I don't think we can...
It does not, but I think that's a good question.
That was reflected on your plans, that was submitted.
It was what?
It was reflected on the plan.
Oh, okay.
That was submitted.
The architectural submitted did not show the step back.
It did, didn't it?
Just the render, you just gave us a rendering. Sorry, that's a good question, thank you.
Let's change the look, I believe it did.
August 3rd.
I just want to make sure that if it's referenced, that's fine.
Yeah.
You want, so actually, the plan set gave you three elevation drawings, so you would be approving elevation drawing A5.
Oh, just going slow.
Okay.
But...
But not A3 and A4.
Correct, but I'm saying A1 and A2 do not show that step back.
Correct. So I think...
So we need to update that, the architectural's on file, to reflect option...
Yeah, that could be one of the...
So we'll need to add that.
That you update A1 and A2 to reflect elevation shown on A5.
Yeah, s- sorry, I'm not sure we get this right. So what we'll have here is, I, I just wrote, and if this, this language is acceptable to, to the board, prior to the issuance of a building permit, updated plan, update plans sheet A1 and A2 to reflect the board's preference for facade treatment.
Shown on A5.
Shown on A5.
Any questions about that? Or is that...
I was just looking at the plans, he was talking about A1, A2.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, I do.
So just to make sure that before they start, we got the right stuff on file.
And A5 to show, A5, okay.
And it reflects the technical engineers' questions?
That we've already got in the draft decision, so this will be... A, B, C, D, E. I'm sorry about that.
Apologize to Jim, he's reading it.
This will be prior to the issuance of a building permit, A, updated plan sheet.
Before Jim reads it, are there any questions about what we've discussed yet, or everybody's good with what we're going with, okay?
Sorry, does that chicken scratch make sense to you? This will be 3.
Because I did see a draft decision, all addressing engineering and comments and all that are now all before building permit.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and they'll be like F up through A through F or something.
Okay.
This is certified, the meeting and the Danvers Planning Board have...
This is certified, the meeting in the Danvers Plan Board held on August 14, 2018 by a motion duly made in second. It was voted. We, the Danvers Plan Board, have been requesting the section four of the zoning bylaw to approve a site plan submitted by Nicola and Joyce Pashudo. Trustees of Jan 50 Maple Street Realty Trust, property located at 44 and 50 Maple Street, assesses map 43 lots, 355 and 357, and Commercial 1 Zone District, to renovate and restore the properties for residential use on the second and third floors, as shown on the following plans. Plan alterations at 44 Maple Street, Danvers, Mass., prepared for Nick Pashudo. 40 Maple Street, Danvers, Mass., 193, prepared by DMS Designs LLC, 100 Cummings Center Suite 339C, Beverly, Mass., 1915, consisting of sheets, six sheets, as described therein. And then the plan consists of three sheets dated May 11, 2018, revised to August 2, 2018, as described herein. Prior to issuance of a building permit, A, update plan sheet A1 and A2 to reflect the board's preference for facade treatment shown offset.
On sheet A5.
Shown on sheet A5. B, the applicant must update the plans to reflect any modifications or changes raised at the hearing. C, the two, two-inch CLDI water main shall be confirmed. A note needs to be added to the plan on sheet C2 that the water main shall be polyethylene encased. C, or D, one, one D. Proper mass DOT pedestrian sidewalk detour and signage shall be implemented during construction shall be detailed on sheets C2 and C3. E, the existing drain line information provided in the engineer's memorandum of August 9, 2018 needs to be incorporated, and any conflicts with the new water service installation needs to be resolved. F, clarification to whether the two-inch service will use the existing core hole or whether it will be installed next to the existing service. G, an approval not required plan shall be filed for endorsement. Two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, A, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the last market rate unit, the applicant must complete the affordability certification requirement for the affordable unit under the subsidized housing inventory. As approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development, the distribution in unit size of this affordable unit must be consistent with the applicant's variance granted by the ZBA. B, the parking area in the rear of the site must be seal-coded, seal-coated and re-stripped. Three, this project is subject to the following conditions. A, is the board's expectation that a permit to occupy Maple Street right away will be necessary to protect pedestrians on the sidewalk. This approval requires the applicant maintain a valid agreement with the selectmen in good stead whenever such protection is required. B, all deliveries to the property, commercial or residential, must be made to the rear of the building. C, any approval of this site plan shall lapse within two years from the grant thereof, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause. Once begun, the improvements detailed in this decision must be complete within two years, unless extended by a mutual agreement. This approval is also subject to the attached list of general conditions approved by the planning board on January 27, 2004, as amended through February 27, 2018, which are incorporated in the certificate of action by reference.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Just on item, prior to the building permit, item B, it says, update the plans for issues that were raised during the hearing. I don't think we have any of those.
We added the engineering comments to the.
Right, which you've listed separately. I just don't want an open item that we haven't defined what it is.
Could that have been referencing the design?
We were, we put that in the draft decision, not having the engineering comments in hand, so it's a bit redundant now that we.
Which one is it, B?
B, now that we actually know what those open items are, that is probably extra to the decision.
Can I have a motion to amend the motion with striking item B?
I move that we strike item B from the motion for 4450.
Is that satisfactory to both the board and the applicant? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Okay.
Did you have something?
Did you move on the final motion?
That was.
Final motion.
That was final.
That was the final motion, yeah.
Did you need to or want to add a motion for approving the alternative parking plan, which we had just, I included in the application, because you were fine with the parking as we have laid it out?
Yes.
All right, so your site plan is, just as long as the minutes reflected, the site plan incorporates the parking issue?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Barry.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we know when we anticipate start?
We're moving on to construction drawings, so maybe I would say.
The plan to be in the ground.
Spring.
Spring.
Spring?
Yep. All right, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is minutes for June 21, 2018, and June 26, 2018. Charles, ready for the quiz? Any questions from the board about minutes?
Move to accept the minutes of June 21, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And for the 26th?
Move to accept the minutes of June 26, 2018, as shown.
Second.
All those opposed? I'm sorry.
We're trying to keep us on our toes tonight, aren't we?
I'm trying to move this along way too fast, apparently. Do I have a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor, sorry. I don't know where I.
Yes.
Been a long day for me.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have briefing from, from staff.
Not much, but I did two things going on that are hopefully moving in the right direction. We had interview, or I and Human Resources had interviews today for the principal planner position. Two very strong candidates, and will be probably making an offer for the principal planner position towards the end of the week, or early next. And likewise, I've got a solicitation going out tomorrow to try to find us another planning board member or alternate, as the case may be. So hopefully sometime in September, we'll be able to be fully staffed and have a full complement of board members. I just glossed over the fact that we're having first set of interviews for planning director on Monday, the 20th. So both of the vacancies are moving ahead, and we've got, I think, a strong crop of applicants to choose from, so things are looking good.
Great.
And Francine is ready for help?
Yes, she's been doing yeoman's work.
She's already tired of me.
Yes. I had a question, it just flowed out of my head. Oh, since we've, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna ask about a couple of things. One is, I can't remember what happened after the High Street. I was reading the minutes. Where we are, are they gonna get, is MIPC gonna get back to us? Are they done with their study? Do we take it from there?
I think, yeah, just off the cuff, I believe we've concluded the work that that contract was for, and now it's kind of on us to get, and I think the board had previously discussed once the C1, C1A conversation is had with the selectmen on September 6.
We're meeting with that, well, that was my another question.
Yeah.
Do we have a board of selectmen and a ZBA meeting set?
Yes, September 6.
Okay.
There was an email that went out towards the end of July, I think, with that date. I can send a reminder of that and the September schedule while we're there.
Okay.
But yeah, I think it's because of the primary on.
The 4th.
It's on a Thursday night.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So it's not the selectmen's.
It's gonna conflict, well, I'm on Open Space Recreation Advisory. That's at 6, that's at 6, though. We should be over by 7.
The meeting is 4, 6 to 7. The selectmen have a regular meeting starting at 7.
Well, then I, I just had the selectman meeting.
I'll send you a reminder.
Okay.
I apologize. Yeah, it's been, it was late July when we did that.
Okay, are you, I'm, and when you said that, the date, I seem to recall seeing something with it, but it's just gonna be the board of selectmen, not the ZBA?
The ZBA's been invited. Not sure how many of them will be able to make it that night. I just got a regret today from one of them. So hopefully, everybody shows up.
Okay.
We'll talk C1, C1A, but obviously, the planning board, you know, depending on how they, what they feel, that may, you may wanna move on to High Street sooner than C1, C1A, or.
We'll continue with C1.
Right, right.
Okay.
So you guys can make that decision in the wake of that.
Okay, so.
So you have.
Go ahead.
An agenda of some sort to kind of move it, I mean, it's only an hour, so it's.
Yeah, it was supposed to be, when initially conceived of by staff in the spring, it was going to be a more broad topic with several agenda items and kind of go over all the stuff, I think, given the difficulty in scheduling it, and time is of the essence for C1, C1A, to know where that process is at, and if whether or not, you know, what town meeting we would like to target for that. We decided, and after we, the town manager and I discussed it, we just decided, let's just have it focused in on C1, C1A. That is, you know, we need to decide where we are with that process. So that becomes really the only agenda item. I mean, obviously, if we fly through that and have time for other items, I'm sure that's a good chance, a good audience to bring it up with, but I'm guessing that that conversation will take the bulk of an hour.
That kind of leads into my question, since we've basically finished everything that was in front of us, is there a lot between now and the other meeting coming up, or no?
What would our next regular meeting be, September 11th? Right now, we're, right.
Wouldn't we have another meeting in August?
We were only planning on one.
One meeting, okay.
Right, one meeting in August.
Okay, September 11.
So we've got the 6th, and then the 11th.
I think as we get closer, and we'll talk to our esteemed chair as we get closer to September 11th, if nothing is coming, and then.
No reason to meet, yeah.
There's no reason to meet, unless you wanted to kind of work plan, you know, have a conversation about what you want to do, like with High Street, but I mean, in theory, I think the C1A is kind of on track, and that's probably where the board's focus will stay for the next short term.
If we have nothing in front of, well, it's, I know it's a month away, but we can always hash out on emails if we decide we want to meet for something outside of any.
So the other meeting in September would be September 25th?
Mm-hmm.
25th.
Mm-hmm.
No, 25th.
Be an odd number, 25th.
So, I'll send out a reminder of all three of those dates, and again, if the 11th, if nothing comes in, then we'll cross that bridge and we'll get there.
What about new members? Did you say you were?
Yeah, solicited going out tomorrow. We've got a pool of about seven, I think it's seven or eight names that have expressed an interest through the town's talent pool application process, and I'm gonna send out an email to those folks to see if, A, if they're still interested, and if they are interested, to do kind of a screening conversation with them. And we'll go from there, but hopefully, we can get someone seated.
Mr. Harrison's into it?
Mr. Bradstreet did not want the gig.
He's here anyway.
I know, I've already, I've polled him, and.
We got him up to the mic for the first time in almost a year right now.
I told you before, one reason for me to decline is I don't have the patience.
Anything else for staff at this time?
I don't think so.
Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good night.
Good night.